I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's 6:36, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mitch?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal liberty, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded video and audio. Approval of minutes for December 18th?
I make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Are they saved? Chuck, can you see if there's any public input?
Please.
Student representative report?
This is Riley. Thank you for having me here. Superintendent students' focus groups at AHS are complete. Data will be shared at the next faculty meeting on January 29th. The football team had its end of season banquet. Second quarter progress reports were sent home on December 20th. Due to weather-related cancellations, the first semester has been extended and finals will happen on January 28th, 29th, and the 30th. The second semester will begin on Friday, January 30th. On January 4th, AHS hosted a fundraiser for AHS graduate Kevin Lacoste. The gym was full and over $2,000 were raised. Our pride crew mentors participated in a full-day leadership training on January 6th with Deb and Dana Holt from Core Trainings. Healthcare Opportunity Students will begin their spring Mount Leach Use of Community College dual enrollment courses on January 22nd. The freshman class had the highest attendance rate in the month of December. All classes are being challenged to improve attendance in January. The district learning walk took place today. That's all.
Next, our recognition is Chuck. Anything?
Tonight, I'd like to recognize somebody, and I don't think she's here, but I'd like to recognize the middle school special education teacher Emily Hall. Emily joined the district as a speech-language pathologist assistant in 2015 and was appointed to the middle school special education teacher in 2018. Three weeks ago, I was greeted by a parent who was so excited to share with me their progress of their child, which received their math testing after spending time working with Emily. Her reading score increased to 29 points. So, most of us here understand that 29 points on a math test is a huge gain. With excitement, I asked the parent, "What's the difference? What are we doing that's different?" And the parent notified me that Ms. Hall, along with other educators in the district, started an Orton-Gillingham, and I'm sorry if I'm torturing that name, program this past summer, and was assigned to work with her child. This program is teaching an approach specifically designed to help struggling readers with explicitly teaching connections between letters and sounds, and is frequently used for students with dyslexia. The parent shared with me that it's taken the district several years to get her child the adequate help that she requires for reading. And I know that as a district, we are a long way from having all the specialized services we need for our students. However, I thought this story deserved to be told because she's changing a life. We are changing a life here in the district. And I wanted to specially recognize Emily for her work. Wanted to say thank you. You're making a huge impact, so please keep up the great work.
Anything? No. Hello? Sir?
I wanted to recognize two groups of people. One is the Athol National Honor Society that's providing free tutoring Tuesday through Thursday at various schools across the district. I think it's a great way to make connections between the older children and the younger children, and also a great way to improve learning, obviously. The second thing is a particularly unusual recognition, and that is, over the last week, I've had the pleasure accompanying the superintendent, various other members of the administrative staff, Deb Kuzmeskus, et cetera. We went on various learning walks, some of them formal learning walks and some of them less formal learning walks. I think over the last week, I've hit the high school and the middle school today, and ACES the other day. And it's a recognition really of the fact that teachers have learned unlike when I was a teacher, and I had the superintendent walk into my classroom and I automatically froze up and got really nervous when the principal or the superintendent came in. And yet, we have teams of staff members that walk in routinely to observe teachers' classes for the rationale of improving instruction in the classroom. And teachers do a really great job of just continuing on with their regular classroom, doing the good teaching that they do. And I'd like to pat them on the back for their cooperation and their really positive attitude in that respect.
Student of the Month. Let's start with ACES.
So every month, I send an email to staff and ask them to make nominations for students of the month. And we take this from each side of the house, the early child inside, and we rotate to grade one and then two to four. And this month, I had a lot. And usually, I'd have to read through the narratives and we kind of talk as an admin team. But this time, for the first time since I've been principal, we had two students, one from each house, nominated by two different staff people separately. So that made my job a lot easier. And for the first time, we have a preschooler who has earned student of the month. So, I'm going to start, because her teacher was unable to come tonight. I'm going to start first with Ms. Vivian King. Can you come on up here, babe? Now, Vivian, I'm going to read to you what your teacher wrote about you, okay? So, who teachers wrote about you? Ms. Brantley and Ms. Bullock. And so Ms. Brantley, during Rose Motor Group yesterday, Vivian demonstrated exceptional kindness towards a peer. The peer was frightened to try a new activity, and Vivian went and took her hands and guided her into play. Vivian showed the true ACES spirit by taking care of her friend. And your classroom teacher wrote, Vivian King has gone above and beyond not only with that particular student, but today, she volunteered to eat stat snack with a student who's been sitting alone. So Ms. Vivian? And from the big kid's side of the house, Ms. Eva Burgess. And she was nominated by two teachers who were able to do this. So I'm going to let them speak of her. This is Ms. Danielle Bonardo and Ms. Alphol.
So, we've had this conversation already. I've been teaching for quite a few years at this point, and I can say with 100% accuracy that you are the hardest-working student I have ever had, ever. And I think you know that, right? Eva, as a young learner, is able to set long-term goals and really stick to them, understand what she's shooting for, and work for it long-term, even when it's really hard, right? And even when you're having a hard day and you're struggling to figure something out, you're able to congratulate someone else who was able to do it and be happy for them, like genuinely. You are a very good friend. You are hardworking, you are a good friend, and you're a kind person, and that makes you awesome.
So I had the pleasure of Ms. Eva be walking into my third-grade classroom as a shy, timid, quiet-voiced friend who was really nervous about third grade. And everyone is, right? But for the past five months, I've had the pleasure of watching you blossom into a hard-working, dedicated student, both reader and mathematician wizard, right? And for that, I am so excited to give you the student of the month award, because you truly deserve it, my friend. Would you be ready?
Royalston?
So, our student of the month for Royalston Community School is Joseph Thompson. He was nominated by two of his teachers, Mrs. Blake, his math teacher, and Mrs. Robinson, his ELA teacher. Oh my goodness, they said so many nice things about you. I'm going to tell all these folks and you what they said about you. So, I know Joey brings a smile wherever he goes, isn't that right? You're always smiling, and that's wonderful. But beyond that, he is a super-hard worker. I saw that for myself just today in math. He was trying so hard and working with a partner and just not giving up. And so, trying really hard with learning. But beyond that, his teachers report that they can count on him to keep his classroom clean without even being asked. At the end of the day, "Do you help put up the chairs and do all that stuff?" Well, thank you very much. That's very responsible and respectful. Cleans up trash without being asked, and he's always ready to be a friend and to help and to lend a helping hand. And that you also bring your sense of humor appropriately to class, which makes every day fun while everybody is learning. So, thank you very much for being a model student at Royalston Community School. Can I shake your hand? All right, Joey. Good job. Good job.
ARMS?
Very happy to introduce you to Juliana Durant. Oh, Juliana. And I nominated Juliana for a number of reasons. Her initials could be A-M-L, or Automatic Mood Lifter. Because as you see, it's hard to be around Juliana and not smile. She has that constantly, and I think that's wonderful. Our mission is to learn to be our best together at ARMS, and I think Juliana represents that fully. She'll come to me, let me know if there's a concern I need to look into. She'll tell me when things are going well in class. And recently, Juliana said, maybe about a month ago, you told me that you noticed a change in the classrooms, that things were different and better, that the engagement was there. And I think that's a result of some of the things that we've been trying and doing to improve instruction, so I appreciate that. So congratulations, incredibly hard worker. And one last thing. Almost daily, you say, "How are you doing?" to me. And I know that you mean it, and I appreciate that. Because sometimes people say it to be polite, if you really want to know. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
High school, Dave?
Okay, so, I think the word I'm feeling right now, standing next to Josh, is proud. Freshman year has not always been easy for Josh. But with consistent communication of high expectations and positive support from mom and dad at home, Josh has made a flip and a turn for himself in just probably a little over 45 days. He's made tremendous growth both socially at the school and academically. So, we want to recognize you for that tonight. You also did have a teacher that nominated you for this, for your tremendous community service. So, that's what the award is here for, growth and community service. Ms. LaJoy wanted to commend him for working over 11 hours at our annual wrestling tournament. He did that completely voluntarily. He's not on any National Honor Society, anything like that. He just said, "I want to show up at the school, be involved with the school, and find out what Athol High School is all about." So, he spent that entire Saturday at the school. She said he was very reliable, trustworthy, energetic throughout the day, and even took time, when it was downtime in the concession stand, to work on his personal finance homework. So, it showed great responsibility as well. So, Ms. LaJoy wanted to say she is very proud of you, and it's a very positive experience to have you in our school. So, Athol High School's student of the month is Joshua Ailes.
Okay. Subway scholar athlete of the month? Dave, do you know anything about that?
Go first.
Nope. Dave's got it.
Beavis, who's at a home wrestling match tonight?
So, with me is Rochelle Gonzalez. Rochelle is a three-sport athlete at Athol High School. I'm going to have you hold that. Three-sport athlete at Athol High School. She's on our girls volleyball team, indoor track team, and outdoor track team. She's a tremendous student, student-athlete. She maintains a 2.5 GPA, is one of the most upbeat, energetic people in our school. We're proud to have you as a Red Raider. Along with this is a gift card for you and your family to enjoy a subway dinner. Okay? Congratulations.
Landon Mallett, please. So, the Subway Athol Scholar Athlete of the Month for ARMS is Landon Mallett. Two-sport athlete while holding an A average. Is this your mom?
Yeah.
Mom, can I ask you a question? Has Landon's hair been blonde recently? No. Because when Mr. Beavis gave me this, he said, "We're going to retake the picture," because the hair didn't come out quite right. And then this picture, your hair is blonde. I was just checking. So, I think we should do a retake. Congratulations. Friday, we'll take a new picture. Great job.
Unfinished business. Strategy, strategic plan question.
Yes, so basically, last meeting, we had given an update on the strategic plan, and we asked people to take a look at it, and if they had any questions, to let us know at this time. So, I didn't know if anybody at the school committee had any questions in that regard.
We move along. New business, superintendent update?
There are two things that I just wanted to make the school committee aware of. First of all, at our last school committee meeting, I wanted to thank the school committee for voting to approve the indicators I'm being evaluated on. I want to let you know that you will receive in your email box tomorrow the actual evaluation document with my evidence that I have for mid-cycle. So, you will be receiving that in your email. My understanding is you should have received in your email from Lee a blank document that you're supposed to be filling out. I want to make sure everybody received it. If you didn't, you may want to check in with him on that.
I think we got this tonight. Yeah, I think it's tonight.
Oh, you got it tonight, okay. So, what you will receive from me is actually evidence for each one of those indicators that are available for you to use. I think that's an amber alert.
I'm sorry, that's an amber alert.
Yeah. But I just wanted to make the committee aware that I have completed. I will have that document completed tomorrow and emailed to you, so you can see some of that evidence. The second piece, just to give you an update, is at the last school committee meeting, as you are aware, the CPAC came with somewhat of a needs assessment. I want to let the school committee know that I have put together a response to their statements. You will be receiving that in your email by no later than Friday. And I will be meeting with the CPAC on Tuesday evening to go over that report. Both myself, Catherine Clark, and Christine Fontaine sat down and reviewed that. So, I want to make sure the school committee is aware that we are responding to the CPAC in regards to that. We had emailed them after the presentation and stated to the CPAC, we want to be clear, these are the things that you were concerned about. A, we got feedback back from them saying yes. And from there, we put together a report on the findings based on their concerns. And as I said, we will be meeting with the CPAC, I believe it's Tuesday night, to discuss that and give them that. But I just wanted to make the school committee aware, you will get a copy of the report along with some appendixes that go along with some of the statements we made. And you should have that in your email box by no later than Friday. Thank you.
Questions? Food pantry partnership, so, Mitch?
Yeah, just on, can I just check my email? I don't seem to have a copy of that superintendent. It's in your packet tonight. And what you will get from me is a document with my evidence on each of the indicators, which will be coming to you tomorrow. Okay?
Food pantry partnership?
Yes. Shirley Mitchell is going to come up and talk to you about that. Just so you are aware, the Worcester Food Bank came to us, I think it's two and a half months ago now, requesting that we put a food pantry into the high school. We had a discussion, both myself, Shirley, food service director, and Dave King, about this. I am very supportive as the superintendent. I think it's something that could be very helpful to our community. In order to do this, we have to sign a partner agency. We have to fill out an agency application and sign, saying that we're in agreement with this. But before I can do that, I need to have approval from the school committee. So, I'm going to let Shirley kind of fill you in on our thought process as to where that would be located and how that process would work.
Thank you, everybody. Vivian, and thank you for all your work as well, too. So, when we started the process in October, Dave King and Carolyn and myself met after that meeting and kind of talked about where this could happen at in the high school. And so, we located a space that's shared in my office. It's pretty big. There's some empty space that's happening. We had called the town board of health in to make sure, like, this is adequate space. And so, she said yes. She gave some suggestions on what would need to happen. And so, we're at this place where, okay, we're ready to begin. We need to apply for the food bank to get the school committee's permission to be able to apply to make this happen at the school.
Chuck?
Sure.
So, I can vision, I understand that. I'm in the energy. And kind of what's the concept? If I'm a student, is there a point at which I might be able to come to do, and so teach and, and my family doesn't have it? Is there something that you can do from, is that kind of how it works? Or what's the?
So, that, these are, those are great questions. So, yes, that happens now, too. And right now, we try to connect the family with supports and services, or the student themselves, if it means, like, trying to make arrangements for them to go to another food pantry. And so, right now, when we met with the people from Worcester, there's a couple of churches and then the Salvation Army. They have limited time that they're open. And so, there is a grant for the position that would hire a food pantry coordinator. And so, our hope is that we could offer some after-school hours. But if there were students that were there, we could make it available. It's in my space, so, you know, I could walk them through. And the great thing about it is the grant also covers a brand-new refrigerator and freezer, so we can provide them with, like, fresh fruits, vegetables, things like that as well, so.
And what I would say to that, Chuck, too, is the gap, where it would be located is at the back of the building, with a door that you could enter right in, go right into the pantry and leave. So, it could be a very private space for families as well. And the other thing is with Shirley having access to it, if a family said they had a need, you could say to the parents, "We have two options. You can come down, I can come and see you really quickly there, or the others, the student can come in and could provide that support." Right now, in the community, because there is such limited time, the problem or dilemma right now is families don't always get access when they are available to do it. So, we add that extra site to make that happen. It would not just be for students. It would be a community food pantry. So, anyone in the community would have access. And what we wanted to make sure happened, it was in a location where they can go in the building, do what they need to do, and leave, and not necessarily enter the educational space. Because there's a door that opens, goes right to where the pantry is, and then there's another set of double doors directly after that that we could make sure are secured, so we don't have a flow going in and out. But I think it's important for our community, because it also demonstrates and shows that we're committed beyond kind of, let's just get to service hours, but this is what you do to fulfill a need within our community, and are hopeful that we can get a host of students who would be willing to volunteer to help be part of the running of this pantry as well.
I just wonder, who stocks the food? How is the food stocked?
So, it would be stocked by the Worcester Food Bank. So, right now, they're dropping off fresh fruits and vegetables in this area as well, too. Same with Winchenden. We would have to go down, but there's also a potential partnership, too, with the Salvation Army. They're already going down as well, so they could drop food off, too, for us. The students could unload it. And if there's some community service hours, then we can go and help them as well. So, our hours would also offset what the Salvation Army is able to offer at this time.
This seems to be an excellent program and an excellent idea, I think, in terms of our connection with it. I have two questions with regard to that. First of all, is this a program for families who are currently receiving SNAP benefits? Or is it also for those who aren't on a food stamps program?
Anybody, nobody would be turned away.
So, there aren't any eligibility requirements other than the fact that somebody says that they need?
They have a need, yeah.
Thank you.
Nancy?
I would like to make a motion.
One second.
Do I have a second?
Second here.
Has been a motion? And second it on the floor, any?
Yeah, just in terms of discussion, I'm wondering if the motion needs to be expanded to say that we support the food pantry by allowing it space within our high school? Or is it rather than simply supporting it? Because I assume we support it in any case, but do we need to be more specific about that? I think we're supporting it through the signature of the memorandum of agreement and the space. I think it's the two things that need to be said. Yes. So, the memorandum. So, can I add that as a friendly motion, friendly amendment?
Sure.
Thank you.
We would beat it, Mitch?
To approve these, signing the memorandum of agreement and the space within our school's new zone.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. You said that the security to the school for families who are picking up during school hours with children there, double doors. Are they, are they going to be locked? How are we going to provide security for the kids?
So, that might be something we have to sit down and talk to Bob about before it officially opens. But we will make sure that it's secured, so that people can't enter the building without us being aware that they're there.
Those in favor? Thank you. Budget presentation?
That would be me and Lynn. I'm going to move to the other side now that I have a foot that actually works. So, I will move to make it easier on everybody else. Do you have a PowerPoint up here that I'm using tonight? And Lynn, feel free to chime in.
That's Bob's book, too. But 2019, it should be 10,000.
Well, there you go. So, I have to fix that. I will use the mic over here, if that works for you. As we go through this process, and I'm going to ask any of the directors if I'm going through anything.
As we go through this process, and I'm going to ask any of the directors if I'm going through anything and you want to add or individual schools, please feel free to do that. So this is our version A. This is our first presentation of the budget. For anyone who's new through this process, please know and understand. We have multiple versions. This is just our first presentation. We obviously looked for feedback. So we've gone to both FINCOMs, both Athol and Royalston. We have presented this to the subcommittee of the budget subcommittee. And now we're doing our first presentation here at the school committee. So this is first version A. Prior, there was a draft version. And this has been augmented since the draft version based on just those meetings. We will continue this process. Lynn and I have put together a timeline for meetings. So for example, we will be meeting with the principals, we'll be meeting with the union, we'll be meeting with the, the town boards, all to make sure the input is in place for our budget. So I want people to know that because obviously, and this will not get voted on until we feel that all input has been received. So there we go. So first, I just want to remind you, and I apologize, this one here is hard to see. But we have an educational focus, and those are the three goals in our strategic plan, which by now people should be aware of. One is really around improving literacy. Two is around creating support systems for social, emotional, and behavior support for students in the classroom. And then three, using data to drive decision-making in areas of curriculum and student learning as well as social, emotional. This is important because our thinking around where we're anchoring what we're doing is in relationship to these goals. And so when we're looking at why are we putting those money in that area, hopefully you'll understand that as I go through the presentation. Next, our budget targets, our first and foremost, secure all positions within the district. That's our first priority. Our second priority really goes and aligns with the memo you got from MAS C today, if you haven't read it yet. As you know, in the state, they, the House and Senate voted to allow for a Student Opportunity Act. So school districts with low-income students are going to be receiving more money. We are one of those districts that is slated to receive more money. How much, we don't know. So this year, when you see our budget presentation, you're going to see column A and column B. Column A is kind of what we currently have, because that's our first target. Column B is what we'd like to add. And I want you to know, the additions come from recommendations of the principals. So I want to make sure you're aware, we've already met with the principals. Lynn met with them first, discussed how to do it. Then we had a budget meeting with each individual principal to go over what they were looking for. So that second column is if we end up with some of this money, how are we going to make it happen? All right? And then the last thing is to continue to upgrade Athol High School, which is part of our strategic pla, plan under facilities. So before we get started, our strategy up until now has been working. I won't spend a lot of time on these slides, but I want people to be realized that we've made great improvement in the last two years, making sure that our budget priority is in those goals. So this is our math scores and where we went. Our science scores, and I think somehow I managed to miss the ELA once, there you go, and ELA. And so we're seeing great improvements in the majority of our areas. And Molly will be coming up later talking about our benchmark test, will we continue to see that? So, and even chronic absenteeism, we talk about the social, emotional side. This has been something we've been concentrating on. As you can see, we exceeded all of our targets last year in that particular area. So before we get started with the kind of numbers, I want you to know, we've been really good fiscal stewards. I could not ask for a better finance, finance manager, to tell you the truth. Because I always want, and she's what I call Dr. Maybe or Dr. No. And it's a good thing because at the end of the day, she's very conservative, but realizes we have needs. And so she remains conservative. And then towards the end of the year, I can loosen her up a little bit and we can make some things happen. And it's been a very good marriage because the person who says yes all the time isn't always the right person in the relationship. But we've been really good fiscal stewards. We've been able to transition money every year over to the next year to help fund some of the pieces that are going on. We have been very good about making sure our budget aligns with what's going on. And we look at maximum efficiency in spending. So we don't just go say we're going to buy this without looking and saying, where's the best place to buy it? How do we save money in that area? So I believe in the last couple of years, working with Lynn, we have done a really good job in that area. And we've been really able to support schools with not only materials, but also bodies to, to help move students. So what I've done this year with the directors and the principals is we've divided this out now by individual school so that people can be clear about what's happening in those buildings and what the needs are for that. So what I'm going to talk about is really this third column. The first column is what already exists. But there are a couple of things I want you to see. First of all, if you look at our counts here, these are people that are paid out of our general fund. Here are the people that are paid out of grants. And it's important to know that because as we plan ahead, it's really good to have these. But if the grant isn't there anymore, those positions go away. So you will see here already for next year, this position of adjustment counselor. Hopefully we get SOA funds in so we can keep the position. Otherwise, that position could go away if we don't find the money in the general fund. And so I'm trying to get you to see what we're trying to do here. So at the, at Athol Elementary School, we've continued to have an increase in the number of students there. We have put into place bodies at the grade levels for the students. But the problem is Unified Arts. We have the same number of Unified Arts teachers and about 100 extra kids roaming into Unified Arts. So we really need to increase that. So one of the ways we're going to do that next year is the high school currently has just about half of what ACES has, but yet they have two PE teachers. So one of the things we're recommending is that that PE teacher, once a week, not all the time, once a week goes to Royalston to service the kids for PE, which will allow the other PE teacher to stay permanent at ACES, opening up some more spaces for Unified Arts for them. So that is a situation of just making a, a change within the district. Second, to add a second-grade teacher because right now they have the class size in the district. We're running about 26, 27 students, Shannon, is that accurate? At the third grade? Yes. And so we're looking to add another additional teacher there. We are looking to shift two teachers from school choice funds to the general fund or the SOA budget. Because right now, this year, we were able to put two teachers in there to deal with class size, but we had to use our school choice funds to do that. It's not in the regular budget, so we want to be able to shift that over. SEL support, we want to add one additional counselor. We are concerned, we have two adjustment counselors and only one guidance counselor. So the guidance counselor is dealing with 650 kids every day. And having a second, we'll break that down. And I believe, and Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the state right now recommends for every 450 students, one guidance counselor. So we are over that. And so we need to find a way to put that in. And you've got to remember that a guidance counselor is very different than an adjustment counselor. Adjustment counselor only works with the top 3% to 5% of the population. Kids who have been identified as having some serious struggles and need social, emotional support. The guidance department deals with everyone else. So if you look at those numbers, our adjustment counselors are dealing with about 60 students. The one guidance counselor is dealing with the five, of the 590. So we need to increase that. We are recommending through the SOA funds that that be one place that we put in. Next is curriculum. As administration, we don't see that changing. Curriculum, we continue to build our enrollment, which means every time a new kid comes in, we've got to have a new book. So right now, we're looking at about $67,000 to be able to make sure we have enough books for all the kids in the classrooms for next year. And then lastly, as you, as I just said, the SRG grant is going down again. So this year, what do we get, about 116? 116 this year. Next year, we're only getting 60-some-odd thousand dollars. So this is where we see that adjustment counselor shifting over in order to keep that position with the SOA funds. And I'm going to say to you, our first priority in our budget is ACES as our underperforming school. And so we want to make sure that's the first place in which we are supporting. Next, Royalston. Royalston's student population has gone up. It was 125 last year. We're at 149 kids there as well. So not only is ACES going up, Royalston is too. What we are looking to do next year, which I thought was a really creative idea from the principal, with substitutes, we continue to run into problems. So we looked at the budget for substitutes at Royalston. And what we realized is for the amount of money we pay for a year, we could hire a full-time sub at Royalston who's always there. And what would happen is when someone's out, they sub. When there's someone isn't out, we could use them for IEP meetings, extra support in the classroom, and so forth. So we've put that into place. There is no cost add, added to our district because we're already spending that amount of money for a sub now. So it would not make a difference, but the, the person would be full-time and permanent in the building. This is the one place where we see that working. Yes? That's a good question.
Yes, it would be.
Yes. But I know Lynn has run the numbers on that, and we seem to be okay.
Yep.
Next is to add two teacher leaders at Royalston. Because one of the problems is right now, the way our teacher leader structure works, is we pick people by grade level. So if people apply and they all come from ACES, when the principal wants to meet in an ILT team with her building, there's nobody from her building on the team. Right now, she has one person. So we want to add a couple of more teacher leader slots to make sure they're part of the planning for the school. The other thing we want to continue to do is make sure that adjustment counselor remains in the building so that we have somebody who's helping to work and support kids who might be struggling. So that's remaining, principal's position remaining. And I want to note again, the principal's not, doesn't work point, point eight. She works full-time, but remember, point two of her position is paid out of a grant. So her whole position is not paid through our general fund. Part of it is paid through a grant. And we currently have one teacher for Title I who is paid, who is paid through the grant. So it's important we understand that because moving forward, if that grant money ever went away, we would have to think about how to go about doing that. Any questions on Royalston before I move on? Yes?
Do they have different duties or the same duties or?
No, the teacher leaders will join the, the actual ILT team. So it's about $1,800 per person for them to be part of the ILT team with the principal. And basically what the ILT team does is works with the principal around their, their plan for the school and making sure it's being monitored and followed. And the second thing they do is they review the data for the school and help to see patterns and trends and make recommendations on what they can do differently to support students.
And why did, why isn't it that you went with two rather than one, given the size of the school?
We went with two because if it's just one in the principal, you're not getting a really good view of what's happening in the building. So having two allows you at least one person from the lower grades and one person from the upper grades.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. So any other questions on Royalston? Next, we have the middle school. Right now, we're running about 438 students. We see that remaining about the same at this point. And if you take a look, one of the things we want to look at doing is last year, we had to make some cuts here and there. And one of them was, recommended by the principal, was to cut some of the lunch duties. We see that's not working, so we want to put that money back in to make sure there are more bodies at lunch. SEL support will remain the same. And one of the things we're looking at right now is a dean to add to the building. And let me explain what I mean by that. One of the, one of the questions that keep coming up is kind of IEP processes and how long it's taking. This dean would actually be a facilitator for special ed. And the focus of the job would really be running all IEP meetings to make sure there's continuity and consistency and supporting families. So if they have a concern, they would be able to go directly to this person and work through it with them. And so it would be putting someone in place to help support that within the building. And then obviously, the other big-ticket item there is adding additional books so that the school can, can provide. And one of the major areas we're looking at is social studies because we've done a curriculum review of social studies. The eighth grade curriculum has fully changed in the state, so we need to make sure we have text to go along with it. Did I miss anything along with curriculum? Okay, doing all right. I've got to remember everything everybody told me. Yes?
Just a quick question on that position.
Yeah.
Would that position be supervised or would it work directly with the teachers?
This position would not be supervisory. It would not be. That's why it's called a dean. If we do it as supervisory, we'd have to call it an assistant principal. And we're not there. What we're trying to do more of in this district is more entry points for people to look at administration. So it allows a person to step in, try it, and say, this is for me or not, and not necessarily have the license. So what they could do, besides doing IEP meetings, they may be able to help with some behavioral support in the building. But what it does is it allows them to help with behavioral support, but they would not evaluate a teacher. Because they wouldn't have the license to do that. But it opens it up for other people to begin to, we say, is this something I want to try?
I think a couple of positive points about that. First of all, the dean of students presumably is 20 or 30 or $40,000 less than an assistant principal would be. And secondly, although that dean of students couldn't evaluate, that dean of students could take on some responsibilities which would allow the assistant principal more time for evaluation.
Exactly, exactly. And that's important. And you've got to remember, if you look at our structures right now, in every building except this one and Royalston, there's only one additional administrator in the building. This would add an additional body. But the body is not an administrator. I want to make sure that's made public. Because we're looking for someone to help support in some other areas, but not necessarily be an administrator. So I want to make sure that's clear. But that's, that's in there, and that's only if we get SOA funds. So we're not talking about this coming out of the general budget. So I want to make sure that's clear. So if the SOA funds come in, this is one of the areas we would recommend for supports. Any questions on the middle school? Okay, next, Athol High School. What we are looking at at Athol is really, for the most part, status quo. Will you see changes is one, that point two PE going over to Royalston, so they would lose some of that. But with the numbers there, you could see why that's more than feasible. The other piece here where you see a big-ticket item is around curriculum. Now that we have revised our curriculum, really paid attention to standards, in order for us to really have a viable science curriculum, we've got to have materials. And some of those materials are things you can't use from year to year. I can't dissect a frog and put him in a basket and say, next year, we'll use him again. And so the ticket item, when we look at it, a lot of it is those consumables that we need to keep buying for science instruction, which is very important. And since we've revised the curriculum, we've got to make sure that we have, we have that in place. Okay? And then athletics, right now, we are looking at additional money for transportation and general supplies for athletics. This is something that we could have a discussion about again. There is a separate account for athletics. If we want to look at that, and that's the ticket money that comes in, if we want to look at shifting that over, if we had a situation where we could not budget, that might be something we want to think about. I don't think we're in that position right now. But depending on what happens with the SOA funds, that may be something to consider, but it is not something we have to consider at this point based on what we're looking at for funds coming in. Okay? Next is the district level. What we are looking for is to create two special education facilitators jobs. So one of them I just described to you, which would be here at the middle school. The other one would be at the elementaries. And that again is to make sure there's continuity and consistency when working with IEPs in the district. And there are a lot of schools that have these positions. And the reason why they have them is to ensure that no matter which IEP meeting you go to, the standard is the same. And so we're, we're recommending that. And again, all of these funds would come out of the SOA. So we're not looking for this to come out of the general fund. We're looking to see if the SOA money comes in for that to be a place of support. For maintenance, we see from last year to this year, a slight increase. And a lot of that has to do just with things that are more expensive. Special education, you are actually seeing a decrease of over, close to $140,000. And that's been because we've been able to build some programs in district that are much more cost-effective than moving a child out of district. And so that's where we've had some savings. So it isn't the student isn't getting the service, but instead of us paying $100,000 between transportation and a program at our site, what we're doing is trying to hire teachers here. We've hired two additional special ed teachers here to try to keep the kid in house as much as we can and at a less, a less expensive cost. So you're seeing that we've gone down slightly in our, in our special ed department. Technology, you also see a decrease, but I want you to know why. We're not buying less technology. Again, with, with Dr. Maybe know, we've been able to save some money this year. So we should be able to purchase $100,000 worth of Chromebooks this year, which means we don't have to put it on the budget for next year. So this is actually the highest I think the tech department has asked for. And we're going to probably be able to meet. be able to meet it. Um, so, we're looking at, I think it's five additional Chromebooks? Well, how many- how many total Chromebooks will we get out of this hundred thousand dollar?
Five hundred and thirty-five.
Right. Five hundred and thirty-five, um, Chromebooks will come into the district. And remember, right now, based on what we are hearing from our vendor, the ones over at ACES next year will complete- be completely obsolete?
They're phasing out.
They're phasing out. So, yeah. So, if we don't replace them, we will not have one-on-one devices there anymore. And the other thing we want to do is build in the other schools as well, to get to a place where we're close to one-on-one. All right? So, um, that investment, I think, is quite valuable. The other piece is ELL. We are looking to put in an additional, um, half-time ELL student, and that's because our percentages have gone up. When I arrived here, we were at about two percent. We are now at ten percent. And so, obviously, that's a dilemma. It's still not a large number of kids, but remember, it's four buildings. So, you're asking this one-and-a-half person to be everywhere. It's too much. And so, we want to look at adding a point-five, so that that can happen. Right now, what we're looking at is, um, ACES, we have a teacher right now that's half-time ELL, half-time Title I, making that person a full-time ELL to support those students, uh, overall. And with the SOA money coming in, hopefully, that'll work itself out. And then, lastly, um, we've currently paid for two psychologists. One is contracted, one is full-time. Our goal is to hire that second position, so we're not having to contract that. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Darcy, just a quick question to the ELL. You said gone from two percent to ten percent.
Yes.
Is ten percent of our population what you're referring to?
Ten percent of our population is now identified as-
ELL.
As- I- let me make sure I'm clear on this, because I- I thought about that. Um, ten percent of our pop- population is now a minority. The majority of those minorities have come in now. English is not the first language.
But our number is technically qualified in ten? Ten percent, or is it?
Ten percent for minority population, correct.
For minority.
Yes. And out of that minority population is probably about eight percent of those kids need ELL services.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought you were talking about the groups.
Yeah. So, thank you, because I- I need to correct my language there. The other thing I would say to you is we're getting a lot more newcomers, which means they're coming with no language. And that requires more resources, because when you support ELL, it's based on their level, as to how much time they get. So, a newcomer would be considered a one. They really need a half a day to support. A student who's at a four or five, who's close to understanding the English language, may only need that. And so, that's also playing into that stretch. So, we have a couple of kindergartners right now who will come in with no English language. And one of the creative ways we're looking at outside of this is actually putting in a couple of power positions where they speak Spanish. And it does not mean hiring new. It just means hiring people who speak Spanish. Uh, and normally, through attrition, we should have a couple of positions open to be able to do that. The last- yes?
Sorry, don't- um, just out of curiosity, can we get a, um, a accurate count of the number of, uh, students in our district that do avail themselves of ELL services?
Yes, yes. Can somebody write that down?
My understanding- my understanding was twenty-seven. Isn't that what, um?
It's twenty-seven. I- I don't know if it's twenty-seven total. It might be only in one building. So, let me get that from Beth and get you an accurate number.
Thank you.
Okay? Next, is this is just the full budget breakdown, um, byline item, as to what the increases would be. Uh, if you look at- if we look at this overall, and right now, based on this budget, with all of those new positions put into place, from the SOA grant, we're looking at, um, needing about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, to level budget. But remember, all of those positions are in there that we're saying for SOA. If we were to take out all those positions from SOA, we'd probably take, what? Close to two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars off of this number?
Close to three hundred thousand.
Yeah. And so, it's important to understand that.
Yeah. I'm just looking at the, um, line right above that, Tuitions Choice, where there's a decrease of being fifty-six thousand.
Correct.
Um, how much of that is savings on out-of-district placements, and how much of it is the decrease in choice-out students?
Yes. And we- I don't know if we have those total numbers with us right now, Lynn?
The choice-outs, about a hundred thousand dollar savings. The tuition's out are about two hundred and fifty-six.
Okay.
Okay.
So, congratulations on, uh, bringing those kids back to the system.
We're doing the best we can. Yes, and we're definitely seeing the number of kids who are choosing out of Athol lowering. I think, uh, you might have even given the committee a chat on that. Did you give that last month that you gave to me?
David at Royalston.
For that, yeah. Or the choice- the choice.
Yeah, at the FinCon, so we may want to bring that and give it to this group as well, so you can see that. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions on the budget breakdown sheet? Next is the history of spending. Um, and this just goes through and shows you what we've been asking for from the towns over the- over the years. And we actually, in the first, in sixteen, we didn't ask for anything, and, uh, we didn't get anything. In seventeen, we didn't get anything. In eighteen, we didn't get anything. Uh, then nineteen was one point two-four, twenty was one point eight-eight, and this year's two point five-nine. But again, remember, that includes all the SOA numbers. If we were to take the SOA numbers out of there, I believe we'd be under two percent. Okay? So, it's important that people understand that, but we want to be honest in our presentation. We want to make sure we're representing what the school principals are looking for, uh, because we don't want people to believe that we just said, "No, no, no." We want to be clear about what they're asking for.
And we still want to be clear. This is draft. These numbers are just our best guess. We haven't even gotten, uh, some real good numbers from the state yet.
Yeah.
Um, governor's budget will come out next week, we're hoping. And at that point, maybe we'll get some solid numbers. Right now, it's just our best guess.
Right. And I will say to you what's important for the school committee to know. We are going to have to put in a plan on how we will spend the SOA money by April. The good news is, with this already started, you can use this document as a way to pull that out and give the plan to the state, if people feel comfortable with those things that the principals have asked for. Yes, Carla?
Because we know we're getting some SOA money. We just don't know how much.
Right.
Um, if we get the minimum, we have to put that in new spending, right, to- to increase supports for struggling kids, or is that not right?
I- we have not been given all the details on that. An MAS C memo came out today that talked a little bit about that. I am going to the mid-winter meeting for the MAS S. The commissioner's supposed to be speaking there. I think that's when we'll get the- the clear direction. Um, or at least, that's what my memos are saying. So, I can't give you those exact details yet, because we don't have them. Um, the only thing that I have heard so far, and this is from the union, this is not from Darcy Fernandez, a figure of about seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars was thrown out. Um, is that accurate or not? I don't know, but I do know there are multiple pockets where this could come. So, some could come under transportation, so we can't use that for student learning. Some could come specifically under special ed, which means it's only for special ed supports, and then some specifically under chapter seventy. That's what I've heard so far.
And Carla, that's spread over seven years. That's not a one, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand.
No, that is not accurate. Right now, if you look over the seven years, there, what I'm hearing, a number of about six million for this district.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the seven hundred and forty-nine would be for one year. But we don't have that information yet.
Well, let's, uh, just follow that. If we are required to spend all SOA money on new services, um, can we maintain the, um, the spending level that we have now, the staffing and- and things now?
Yes. We feel confident that we would be able to level our fund next year, if the- if the towns were willing to give us, uh, just about two percent. Um, you know, anything beyond that would have to come from SOA money, um, in order for us to support it, and those other requests that have come from the principals. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so, moving on, special education costs, really where we've seen the dip, as I said to you before, if you look, at one point, we had thirty-six kids in outside placements. Now, we have thirty. And remember, it's about seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for every outside placement, the cost for us. So, that's where we've been saving some money in special ed. And we've been using that money to put additional people in at the district. So, we've hired two additional special ed teachers, and I think, right now, the number is five additional powers in the district. All right? So, it's not, we're- we're- we're pulling these kids out of outside placements and not providing the services. We're providing the services here. Next is the district supplements. Again, when we look at this line, I'm telling you, this is not right, because we don't know the answers yet. And that may- we may not get the answers for this for another two months, three months. Uh, but we are doing our best estimate at this particular juncture, waiting to hear, uh, from the commissioner what that's going to look like. And then, lastly, this is what it would look like for debt, uh, I mean, for, what's the word, assessments for the towns, if this budget was to go to fruition, as- as stated. If we did not do any of the SOA stuff, it would go down to here. And what I mean by that is, we said, all those additional positions that Principal's wanting, went into the general budget. This is what we'd end up with. Without them, this is what we end up with. And then, the operating budget for this would be around two point five-nine. And as I said, that is with the debt included, and that is also with those additional positions in place. We take that out, it would be below two percent, probably around what we did last year. Um, so, that's what we're looking at. Yes, Carla?
I'm just, uh, financial ignorance here. If the operating budget, um, the assessment will only increase by two point five-nine percent, why would the, uh, contribution from Royalston increase by eight point four-four?
No, the two point five-nine percent is our operating budget. That's not the assessments. That's what our operating budget-
The total is two point five-six.
So, that's a completely different.
Yes, completely different than the operating budget. Our operating budget may go up two point five percent, but by the time you get to assessments and figure out what the state's throwing in, their- their contribution, the assessments go up nine point five percent, the town assessments.
Right, which is required.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just checking on that.
Yeah. So, I'm going to end the presentation here. And what I would say, if people have asked questions, if you have any more questions, please let me know. The other thing that I would say to you is, any commentary you want to talk to me about, in any of the areas where we've earmarked, there is time for that. We- I will have to get all the subcommittee meetings. Again, does anybody have anything they want to add as far as the budget?
I just wanted to compliment the job that you guys have done. I guess we've kind of been- we've been a little bit privy to some of this information, the budget, subcommittee, and kind of seen this grow, the amount of thought and adjustment, and, you know, how the- the level of how comprehensive it is. I think you've done a great job.
I'm- I just- I want to comment on the presentation here. Um, I'm looking, what the- the increases I am looking at seem to be in the area of support, social-emotional learnings, um, additional supports for the additional numbers of struggling kids, also major expenses on curriculum materials. And, um, it just strikes me that these are very closely keyed to the priorities that have been identified by you and by the school committee meeting.
Right, exactly. And that's what we want to do, is make sure we're not putting the money in other areas, but staying along those lines. I appreciate you saying that.
Pretty good place to spend money. I agree.
Thank you.
Question, um, on the budget. A comment and question. Uh, first of all, it's- it's good to see us, uh, making some, um, some good strides in- in strategic areas. Um, I'm concerned about the question that I put out today, in terms of the fact that it seems like the MAS C has recommended that we- that even given the short amount of time that budgets are due, that we take advantage of the ten weeks, um, to get parental input, uh, community input on where they see, uh, the, uh, on what they would like to see in terms of us using the SOA money. Uh, and they talk about, um, surveys, or they talk about, uh, additional public meetings, et cetera. I'm wondering what we are doing. Um, we've gotten the input from the principals, certainly. We know what they want, but as far as I know, we haven't gotten any, um, any ideas from parents or the community.
Um, I would say two things in regards to that. First of all, under state law, the schools are supposed to go through their school councils to do that, so there should be parent input at that point. Um, so, that- that- that has been started. Um, the second thing that I would say is, a public forum like this is it. Uh, but we're happy to hold another meeting just for parents. Um, I could happily talk to the building principals and say to them, "Can you hold a meeting, just a general parent meeting, uh, to say, 'Let's go through our line items here.'" And I'm sure at the district level, we'd be happy to host something, um, and put it out there to make sure we do that. Uh, I'm not against that. The more input we have just means that we're going to get more support for our kids. And actually, people being actively involved in that process could help as far as the lobbying with the town. So, um, I have no objections for us doing that. And what I could do, Mitch, is to try to put something together, a principals' meeting on next Tuesday? Next Wednesday. We could talk about that, and I could shoot out an email to the school committee as to what we'll do.
Thank you.
Okay?
Any other questions? Chuck?
I just wanted to mention to Mitch, you know, I think the SOA grant, it's way too early to think or assume. It could be some kind of a windfall from it, particularly given it's spaced over seven years, I believe. Uh, the first year, no one really knows what's coming. Um, certain- some districts are going to get a lot of money, and other districts are not going to. You know, some of it's based on needs, some of it's based on cities. You know, there are just so many variables that to expect too much may not be realistic. So, I think we have to be cautious.
Right, I agree.
Okay, moving on. Benchmark testing?
Yes, I'm going to have Molly come up to present this. Uh, this is our winter, so we now have data from the September, um, to con- uh, and from-
Last winter.
The last- last winter. So, we can look at both of those and take a look at what's happening. So, I'm going to turn it over to Molly to do that.
So, in your school packet, you should have the full data presentation tonight. Uh, we're just going to summarize the district-wide data. So, that's on- we're going to start on slide four. So, in your packet for, uh, the benchmark data presentation, if you could go to page four. Um, page four looks at our overall reading, um, achievement and growth data for our students who took the NWEA, um, in the winter. They took it in December. And what you'll notice, looking at this, is, um, a comparison from our data last winter to our data this winter. Um, and what you'll see is that last winter, we had a mean of fifty-four percent of our students who were meeting benchmark, and this year, we have a mean of fifty-eight percent. So, we've seen, overall, and as a district, we've seen a four percent increase in the number of students meeting from last winter to this winter. Um, Darcy reminded me today that the state recommends, or says, that three percent growth is considered significant. So, seeing a four percent growth, uh, for our reading data for us is a real positive. What you'll see on the- on the far right-hand side of that is, you'll see the percent of students tracking that, the cohorts of kids from the grade they were in last year to the grade this year. You'll see the growth that those cohorts have made. So, what you'll see is, from, um, second grade to tenth grade, all but two of our cohorts have made growth, with some significant growth happening in some of our upper-middle school grades and our, um, ninth to tenth grade cohort. Um, so, we're really excited to see that. Um, the two areas where you, um, where we don't see growth, we actually have our ELA coach already working in those grades pretty intensely. Um, so, we've identified, and we're providing supports there. When you turn the next-
Before you go on, Molly?
Yes?
What's important to know is this, the whole reason for this correction action prior to MCAS. So, I want to make sure people understand that. That's the purpose of the data. Um, and so, we're- I want to make sure parents who are- are listening hear that the whole point of this is, if we see a deficit area, to make sure we're pushing supports in that area, so we don't have that outcome at the end of the year. And so, I want to make sure that's being heard tonight.
Thank you. Um, if you turn to page five, what you'll see is an overall summary of our math data. What you'll see in our math data is, in comparison to last winter, we had a mean of forty-nine percent of our students meeting, and that has overall increased one percent. We now see a mean of fifty percent of our students, um, meeting expectation on this assessment for mathematics. So, seeing that growth is exciting for us as well. Um, one of the things I think is important to keep in mind is, our priority has been literacy. So, we've put a lot of our professional development, a lot of our resources into literacy. Um, and so, looking now at that math data, this is really good information for us, moving forward, to make some strategic plans and steps for math. So, what you'll see, again, on that other side, um, that right-hand side, is the percentage of students who, um, who have- the percentage of growth for each of those cohorts. Um, I think it's important to note, we have, um, coaching support happening. Last year, we had a lot of coaching support, um, in grade four. This year, we have a lot of coaching support going on in grade seven. So, some of those areas where we've seen growth, um, we've had been providing supports in. So, I think it's important to note some of the things, um, that we're providing support, or some of the areas we're providing support in, or some of the areas we're seeing more growth. Um, in addition to that, we have some professional development current- currently- In addition to that, we have some professional development currently in place with a group that the state is supporting us in working with called Math Recovery. Math Recovery has, at the beginning of the year, trained all of our K through five teachers in a program called AVMR, AVMR I is the course that they were all certified in. And so, that's a program where teachers can, they get a kit, they can do some additional assessments or check-ins with students around foundational math skills in the number sense strand, which is really the foundation of math. They learn how to understand and diagnose what the specific breakdowns are for kids, and then they learn strategies and techniques for how do they then teach and remediate those particular needs, which the teachers have raved about that professional development. That just finished up in December, so those are now, those practices and assessments are now being used more frequently in the elementary classes. Moving into the second half of the year, we're working with the same group, and they're providing professional development to grade three through five teachers now on a fraction-specific courses. That was a strand that our students were really showing more of a need in. So, we're providing more instruction on fractions. That course actually starts up January 29th for our teachers and runs through May. So, they're pretty excited about that. They've really enjoyed this cohort of instructors that are coming out, and we're really getting a lot more deep in terms of the mathematical conceptual understanding at the elementary and lower middle school grades right now in that training. In addition to that, we are looking at, with the principals, where do we recommend new coaching and supports based on the data as well? That's a summary of the ELA math data. I wasn't going to tonight go into, or have the principals go into, the individual schools. If you have looked at that data and have specific questions, myself or the principals are happy to, you know, answer any of those questions. But we've gone over these data presentations quite a bit, so I wanted to have you have this first and have a chance to look through that. If any questions come up, we're happy to touch base on those at the next meeting as well.
I want to point out with the math data, if you take a look at the charts from winter to winter, what you will see is that our increase, our mean increase would have been much larger, but we had one particular grade that took a huge dive. And so, that took away a lot of the growth that was there. If you took that one out, we would have about a 20% increase. And so, it's important to understand that one cohort can take that whole thing down. We are in the process of looking at to what that corrective action would be in that area. The other thing that I want to point out, and I want to give credit to Shannon here, we chatted a lot last year about what to do with third grade, because third graders are coming, have been in self-contained classes all along, and we had a model where kids were going to math and English separately. Shannon talked to me and said, one of the dilemmas, Darcy, is kids aren't ready for that transition yet. It's really difficult, and that's causing some problems. So, we, we ended up moving to self-contained rooms this year, and we haven't seen any loss, which is very good considering half of those teachers has never taught math before. And so, again, what happened was, we assigned an individual coach to that cohort of teachers to help build their capacity for teaching math, and we're already seeing the benefits of that work. So, I wanna, I wanna put that forth to you so that you understand, and I want you to know and understand, in the areas where we have deficits, we are putting together a plan now as to how we're gonna get extra support for kids. The math is a struggle, because we are having a difficult time finding certified math teachers. So, I put it out there publicly, if any of you are certified and looking for a job in math, we're looking for you, because part of the problem is, giving those extra supports, you've gotta have bodies who will comprehend the mathematics. And so, we are working on, the other thing that we're working on is what is going to be our strategy as a district to build people to actually teach math instruction, because for every math job that is out there, excuse me, for every math teacher that's out there who wants a job, there's probably 15, 20 that can apply to, that people are looking for. And so, we are also thinking along those lines as to how we're gonna build that capacity. And we've been talking about some ways in which we may be able to do that as a district.
Sorry? I'm not supposed to call on you, sorry.
I, I just, I want to point out something important about this whole benchmark data package. We hear a lot about people saying, oh, the school's just interested in raising its scores. They just want to boast about their scores. What this is proving, showing us, is the seriousness of the response when, the way this data is used when we identify a problem. The administration, Molly, Darcy, people really kick in and say, okay, what are we gonna do to solve this problem? So, it's, it really is, it's a, a learning tool for us all on where the issues are and how to, how to respond effectively. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Communications, enrollment?
So, in your packet, there is a document on enrollment, again, just for your information. If anybody has any questions on that document, please feel free to ask.
Moving along. Financial statements and approval of accounts.
Okay, if you would...
All yours.
If you pull out two documents, the expenditure report and the budget line transfer report, then that way I can sort of walk you through where the budget line transfers are coming from, at the same time that I go over my expenditures. The fiscal '20 budget is, is tracking very well. You'll see at the end of the report, special education tuitions are really adding a lot to the bottom line here. So, as we go through this, I will indicate the, the budget line transfers. Budget line transfers are asking to transfer from school choice. We just got our January figures, and that school choice budget has dropped significantly, and we hope to see it drop again next year. When I looked at the school choice student count line by line, there are 26 kids in out of district in grade 12 going to graduate. So, if those 26 fall off, and we don't get 26 added back in, we'll probably see another significant decrease in these expenses for next year. So, we're, we're hoping that's gonna happen. So, for this year, we've got savings now, now that our January figures have come out for fiscal '20, we have a savings there of about $89,000. So, I'd like to transfer that out of school choice. I would like to transfer $50,000 out of our health insurance. It looks like we have maybe an excess of our health insurance right now, about $100,000. I think most of our staff are now in. I think we may have two or three more to put, to put in. Well, we've had such a long period of time this year to get staff in and stabilized. We've just had a lot of changes. So, I think we're gonna have some, some significant savings there. And our unemployment line item also has some significant changes. So, I'd like to make those line item transfers in order to bring back, as we were discussing, those two teachers, two ACEs teachers who are now being funded out of school choice. I would like to bring them back into the budget now, so that we can pull that into fiscal '21. I would also like to purchase the ARMS and the RCS curriculum that we have in fiscal '21's budget, in this year's budget, because I think we can do it. I think we're gonna be able to squeeze those three things out of this year, and if we can do that, we can reduce some of the, the funding in fiscal '21. So, that's my, that's my recommendation for the budget line transfers, and I'll show you that on the report. All accounts are looking good, but if you go to, starting with page, 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 page nine, I have underlined the employee medical insurance. The budget's $1,845,000. I believe we can comfortably, comfortably transfer $50,000 out of that account at this point in time. Our unemployment claims, you see that 29, 999 over on the right-hand side, that's the excess we have in that account right now. So, I, I believe we can comfortably transfer $30,000 out of that. And on page 10, the very last page, there's our school choice tuition. With our new January figures in there, we have $89,000 left to use out of that budget. So, I would like to transfer 89 out of there. So, that would make up for the budget line transfer I'm looking for. So, if we want to do that first, then I can go on to the other votes that I have on here.
Sir?
Yes.
Move to transfer $169,000 from the noted accounts to the listed budget accounts. Any discussion? All those in favor?
So, to follow the sheet down, I went to a business manager's meeting a couple of weeks ago. Now, if you recall, we just increased our subpay, our teacher's subpay to 80. Well, so did everybody else. And they increased it, you know, quite a bit more. So, we were talking, and we would like to vote to increase the daily substitute teacher, teacher pay to 95 effective this year, which will bring us into line with the, the area schools I am seeing a, an increase now. They're settling at between 90 and 100. So, I thought, and Nancy thought, do let's go right in the middle and, and maybe do 95. And in that case, we will be more in the competition with, with everybody else to get subs.
Mitch?
I would move, I would do so with the reminder that we talked about this a few weeks back, and when we raised it to 80, we, we talked about if the money was available, we'd really like to go higher than that, assuming the money's available, do so. That is, yes, to raise the substitute salaries to 8, to $95 per day.
Okay, we have a motion made on the floor and seconded. Any discussion?
I think it'd be good to get that out here now, so that as people are thinking about next year, they'll at least look at us next year saying, okay? Because we stop at the point we're supposed to.
Not a discussion, but okay.
Would this become effective immediately?
Yes.
Am I joined?
I could drive bus and do.
The, the second thing that goes along with this $95 is...
We need to vote on the other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the vote was done.
I thought she just wanted to say something. Okay, all those in favor?
All right, so in conjunction with this, not only did I learn that, that they were between 90 and $100 for their subpay, but also that their, their sub-teachers worked the same amount of hours as the regular teachers. Now, for some reason, I don't know, it's been this way in the district, actually, I just discovered it in the last couple of months, that our sub, sub-teachers only work six hours a day. That's what they're being paid for. They're not pay, they're not working the 6.75 hours a day that the teachers are. So, I would think that you'd want to match that up, but that's, that's totally up to you.
Is that an negotiation? Is that something?
It's a sub.
Court and negotiation?
I wouldn't think so. No, it's a subteacher.
No, it's a subject. School community policy.
I'd like to make a motion, if you bring subs' time up to the same time as, we're good.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mitch?
Yeah, I'm trying to, to think about that, and I'm trying to figure out how we get the, the, just the six hours, because I remember being principal and remember having use of these subs for the entire day, indicating to them that they got a lunch, but they did not get a prep period. So, my guess is that, and the teachers can tell, the principals can tell me this, but I know that's the way we always use subs. They, they didn't have a prep period, and they were, they were used for the entire...
Mitch, is that something very brave, and there's a prep period built into it, but they get a prep period?
No, they go to another classroom to be, to be helpful.
They, we don't have to give them the prep. In some cases, they might get it, in other cases, they may not. But I think when you're looking at the 6.5, I think 7.5, you've got to remember, like teachers have to arrive so much time earlier. They just arrive on time. You know, if they've got to stay a little later, they leave right after. Now, what this would allow the principal to do is say, hey, I can use you for a half hour here after school. I can have them coming a little earlier, so I can make sure they're not running to the class at the same time the kids are. So, I think it will really help to make that process easier, because being a principal of the building, I remember, I've got kids walking in and doing at the same time I got subs coming in, and oftentimes, the problem was, the sub didn't make it to the classroom before the kids did. So, this will allow that expansion of time to happen.
Coming to a classroom, you've got to look at the plans and look at what the teacher has, so we do want to professionalize that, so they get you early, so they look over what they're doing, they have a professional...
Exactly.
Well, I don't, don't want to be the only negative vote on this, but it seems to me, again, that principal, that super, substitute teachers have always come, or at least, my requirement was they always come at least 15 minutes early to look over the plans. So, they were always there by 8:15, 8:15. Their class started at 8:30, most of them were there by 8 o'clock. And if we're going to require that they stay after school, then that's an additional responsibility that as much as we raise the salary, may scare off somebody, well, they always, and why should I go there? I have to stay till 3:30 while the naragans, if they let me go right at the end of the day.
What it means is, if I was coming in a half hour early, I wasn't getting paid for it.
Right, that's what's happening.
Now, I'm gonna get paid. That's the difference. So, it actually should be an attraction.
They're only getting paid for six hours, that's it.
And so, now, if I did come early, I wasn't getting paid for it. Now, you're gonna get paid for it. I think that's the big difference.
And I always thought it wasn't, as you're saying, it wasn't six hours, it was they're being paid for the day, and the day was basically set by the principal. I don't, is that, is, what are the principals?
At RCS, when we have a substitute, they typically arrive by 8:15, and then, once the buses leave, which is typically around 3:10 or 3:15, once dismissal is done, then substitutes leave. It's my expectation, obviously, that we have teachers who are in charge of class for the day, who stay until those students are discharged. So, at RCS, thus far, in my very short time here, this has not been an issue whatsoever.
So, you're saying that they're basically working seven hours at RCS?
Well, they have a lunch, but they have a lunch break.
Well, but they're, they're, yeah.
Yeah. I think what is important to know is, first of all, that condition isn't the same in every one of our building. And secondly, what I need to say is that, yes, before, the way subpay worked was it was by the day, so there were no hours put to it, it was by the day. But if you're calculating at 95 at six, and everybody else is paying 95 at 6.75...
Right.
There is no race here. What ends up happening is, I say, I'm gonna go over to Mahava Sub, because I'm gonna get an additional .75 on my salary. So, that means I'm gonna get an additional, almost, you know, you know, I'm gonna get more money, because I take 95 times 6.75 is more money than if I take 95 times six. So, we're not gonna end up attracting people, because the districts around us are charging 95, they're doing the 6.75. Did that make sense? Am I making sense?
No.
I apologize. But at the end of the day, my point is, we want to be the same as the districts around us, and right now, we're not. We are offering something very different than the other schools, and people are coming and doing the time. So, we, we want to make sure that's what's noted for us.
Let Fred speak. Let, let Fred speak.
Yeah.
The problem with adopting the second part of it, that's the $95, is that that would then require that you have consistency in the school, where currently, it's just for the day. Whatever the day is, is determined by the principal of the school. You may want to leave it that way.
Got it.
And they're just told, this is the day.
Right, gotcha.
And you work with the principals to determine what that is.
Chuck?
Yeah, I, you know, I just believe in consistency. I think if I'm getting subs paid for six hours instead of a full day that most people work, I find that to be neat, because I would like to think that subs jobs are entry points for professional teachers in the long run. And I would like to, if I'm subbing, I want to start thinking like a regular teacher does. In early, check out my, my plans for the day, or whatever the teacher has planned. You know, I'm gonna stay a little later, too. You know, just have that thought process, you know, that I'm not different, even as a substitute, because I might be in that building, but for 40 days, and, you know, I, I should have the same hours as the rest of the people.
Mitch?
Can't that thought process, as it has been in the past, be basically determined by the principal, who says, you know, I always met with all my subs at the beginning of the year, and say, here, my expectation, I expect you here by 8:15 at the very, at the very latest, 8 o'clock if you can make it, and then...
But what about the historical precedent? The people might call back and say, all right, we're only, you know, we're only paying six hours here.
Well, they don't have any historical precedent. They don't have a contract.
Okay, Linda?
Well, I guess, maybe, maybe the issue here...
Well, I guess, maybe, maybe the issue here is the payroll setup, and what has been set up in the payroll is the ninety-five dollars is based on six days. So, they could come in, or six hours, I'm sorry, so they may come in and work eight, but they're only going to get paid for six, because that's what the, what the past practice has been. So, you can come in and have them work as long as you want, but they're only going to get paid for six. So, I'm just trying to make this, or we're just trying to make this consistent with, they should stay with, within where the teachers are staying.
Motion?
That's what I'm saying, this is.
Oh, I thought you made a motion, did you not make a motion?
No, sure, it's not mine.
I would like to make a motion that we may get you a rep.
You know, I.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any more discussion? I think we need.
Could you read the motion back, please?
That we change from six hours to six point seventy-five per day for subs.
Is it still ninety-five dollars?
Yes.
We already voted on that. So, that, so we're not going to, there's not going to be any additional money for that point seven five hour? No, seventy-five spread over six point seven hours, same as a teacher, six point seven.
Okay. Again, Mitch?
Yeah, so for clarification, are we saying that?
Do I need to read it off the paper?
Yeah, why don't you read it off the paper?
No, I'm, I'm, no, I don't, I'm clear on what the motion says.
I'll read it off the paper.
I'm really clear on what the motion says, what I'm concerned about, clarification is beyond the motion. Clarification is, I'm saying, if you're saying that they have to work for six point seven five hours, then if a principal then utilizes them in such a way that they, they have lunch, and they don't have a prep, does, does that differ then for a, for a, a principal gives them a prep, and then says, will you still owe me an hour and a half?
I think what I would say to you, Mitch, is this, the condition every day changes. Example I'll give you, today at ACES, we had multiple people out because of this school, we didn't have enough subs. So, therefore, we had to utilize them all day. There are other days when we have enough subs for the person who comes in, we don't need anymore. So, in that case, you might get a prep, because I'm for Mrs. Jones, and I'm for Mrs. Johnson, and there isn't any need in the rest of the building, so they might end up with a prep time. But on days when we don't have enough subs, we can put them in for that time, so it's not, there's no way to say, every time a sub comes in, some are going to, this one's going to get a prep, this one's not, we can't, we can't do that, because it all depends on the condition of the building and the number of subs that we get on that day.
So, the six point seven five hours basically takes them from one to end?
It takes them from, normally, a teacher would check in, to when a normally, a teacher would check out, which is important, because you don't want the sub running out the door at the end of the day, and they haven't put together a note for the teacher, given the information they need to. If you go by the six, there's not enough time in the day for to do that. I think all of our principals are pretty reasonable, they are going to do what they think is best for their building, and I think we'll be fine, we do that with all our employees.
Ken?
Well, we say they're working six hours now, that's not accurate, because if they're working in the elementary, they're working from eight thirty to three, which is six and a half hours.
They're only getting paid for six, that's the problem.
I think, I think.
But they're still putting the time in.
I, I think we should say they work, work the teacher day.
That's fine.
Period, not an hour.
That's fine, okay.
That's what we're saying.
There's the call to march.
Let's say they work a teacher day.
Yep.
Dave wants to explain something.
Just to clarify, it was from fifteen minutes before the school day started, till the student day ended.
Right.
Not the teacher day, but when the student day ended, that was six point seven hours. Six point seven five hours is fifteen minutes before the day starts to the end of the student day. The student, not teacher day, yeah, teacher day is like.
So, a motion has been made, I think we should vote by now. All those in favor? Pop, you propose, please.
I suppose, Ken?
Cheryl's still counting, okay. Who's in favor?
Oh, David, sorry.
Oppose? Sixteen, no one. Motion passes. Is that it, Linda?
Okay, um, let's see, where, so that was expenditure report, budget line transfers, revenue report should be in here as well. Again, revenue's tracking fine. We expected to get our transportation reimbursement by now, and every year since we've sent in the end of year report on time, that's normally the carrot that the DESE will tell you to get your end of year report in time, in on time, and you'll get half of your transportation in December. Well, because of what's happening with SOA and other things at the DESE, we have not received that funding yet, so it may be concerned, and that's when I got hold of DESE last week and said, what's going on here? And basically, they said, everything's pretty much held off until that governor makes his document, declaration next week on what's going to happen, and then all those funds will be released. It just concerns me that, good thing we weren't waiting for that three hundred thousand dollars for cash flow, and other districts are concerned as well, because, again, that's when we've always gotten our transportation, and now, all of a sudden, the rules have changed, and we haven't gotten that, that funding. So, thank goodness, we're in a good position, that we didn't need that three hundred thousand dollars for our cash flow. I just wanted to let you know that, that that was happening. The charter school reimbursement, based on the new school choice numbers that came out, we also got updated charter school reimbursement information, we'll get, we're going to actually be getting twenty thousand dollars there, instead of that one thousand fourteen that's on the budget. So, we'll be getting, so a little bit more funding there, so that's always a good thing. Then, the grant expense report, you also have in your file, again, no new, no new grants since the last time I reported. Our total grants this year for fiscal twenty, the amount is one million, three hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred eighty-one, and grants are being spent down every month, as they should be, and everything's looking good on that, that end of things. And now, we have an approval and a vote award of a bond anticipation note. Bad language here somewhere for that. So, we, we, I thought I did, but I, I'm not quite sure.
I'm not seeing it.
I don't see it in here, I see the. I see the vote itself, so I will read that to you. We may not have had it at the time the packages went out, so I will read what we got from them. So, a bid went out for the note for the project on, the sale date was January ninth, it was dated two fourteen, and the delivery date was on two fourteen. And so, we are now at a, a note amount of one point eight. If you know, we started out with this project at two point two, but we were able, the bids came in so positively, that we were able to drop that down to one point eight to permanently bond. We won't permanently bond until that project is all done, and DESE comes out and audits the project. Now, that could be another six or eight months by the time that's done. So, we have to keep doing these annual short-term bonds until then. So, the bond did go out to bid, there was two bids, one from Piper Sandler and Company, and the other one was from Oppenheimer and Company. The Piper Sandler coupon rate was two point five percent, and the Oppenheimer coupon rate was two point three five. Now, two point three five, you say, oh, that's a no-brainer, we should go with the coupon rate, but it also depends on what they're going to give you for premiums. And Piper and Sandler are going to give us a lot more for premiums than Oppenheimer. So, the average of the Piper, the Piper Sandler was one point six eight compared to Oppenheimer of one point six nine. So, the bond people have recommended, and it's the lowest rate, you normally have to go with that, would be the Piper and Sandler vote for one point six eight percent. So, we need to vote that, so that they can give the, the bond to Piper Sandler people, and we have to take the number of votes and put it into the vote form that they gave us to do, to send back to them. So, that's what the vote, the vote would be, the vote would basically be, we award the one point eight ARP funding to Piper and Sandler for two point five coupon rate, one point six eight, two four NIC rate. So, your second.
Motion has been made and seconded, do I, any discussion?
I do have the form here, too, if you got, if you do want to look at it.
All those in favor? Anything else, Linda?
And I, I think that's the end of my reports.
So, Tetricon Plan Update.
There is none tonight.
Alright, moving along. Reports of the committee, technically, the chair is out, but there is. No report yet. Budget? Nancy?
The budget is me, and, and Starce presented tonight, and we went over all that stuff, so we know, I think we will.
Okay, facilities.
Um, we met Friday, it was meeting, um, we paid the hundred and four thousand dollars for the final bill.
Nope, the December bills will probably be, yeah, there'll be another one.
It was a monthly, the final bill, it was on housing, work, and housing school. It looks like an expensive, conscious, where you take the painting off, one of your classroom, some touch-up painting. Thought, yes, that it should be done, that's a good one. And then, we, we're having a situation, and the good news is that one of the others, PH one, that they should prove, for the discussion, we, whoever, we're doing the chemicals that they want to use. They'll have a negotiation next week. Unanticipated costs were so heated, that, um, what they need to be done, like, classroom, high school, the debate, that the best is available, and enjoy, um, anticipated costs.
Negotiations, Nancy, anything?
We're still negotiating.
Academic excellence.
Okay, academic excellence. Uh, we met today, and one of the things that, first of all, was, one of the agenda items was curriculum review with social studies. Molly updated us on the fact that the eighth grade has a new civic test, a text that they are using. The other grades are still being reviewed for what text they will be using. Curriculum budget items, I think we kind of heard some about that tonight, that they include all the consumables for the one-do programs, and the K through two science materials that we were kind of hoping for. The high school consumables for the science program up there, and online courses that are being taken up there, such as the Latin. And, let's see, what else, academic coach work going on this month. It's been found that the teachers do not have enough time to actually spend some time with the math coach, and so, meetings, one-on-one meetings were set up and conducted with them. The winter benchmark data, which we already received, Molly went over that tonight, that pretty much covers that. Academic will not meet next month, because as, well, hopefully, you all remember that the meeting is earlier, it's on February twelfth next month, because of school vacation. And it doesn't fit into, on that second Wednesday, it does not fit into the schedule, so we will put that off until March, and I think that's it for academic.
Public relations?
Okay.
Yes, you put.
Sure.
And it's all in the department, citizens. Is that being taught this year?
Yes, it's being, correct.
Because I know the state was mandated that it be taught, and it is.
Correct, it's a point of the tax for number eight first, according to the priorities.
That's a requirement with every student, there's not an election, that's a requirement.
That's correct, that's for every student. And next year, we'll be further developing the service.
You're welcome, sir. Public relations?
Um, we met last week, the main focus of the discussion was developing a clear and understandable procedure for parents or students to report incidents of bullying. And the idea is to, in, to develop a reporting form and upload it to the district website, so that it can be filled out online, forwarded automatically to the principals and the superintendent. This is, this deals with the problem of people reporting incidents of bullying, but they never get to the superintendent, they, you know, it's, it's difficult to deal with things that aren't adequately reported. And the form is going to contain a brief explanation for parents about the legal definition of bullying, and the fact that if an incident, incident doesn't meet that definition, it will still be investigated and dealt with appropriate. And also, it needs, should contain a statement, the principal involved will fill out a response form and share it with the parent of the child involved. So, we're trying to make the procedure easy and clear and fully understandable, and make sure that all the information on an incident of concern gets to where it's going. The subcommittee will not meet next month in place of our meeting time. We ceded to the policy subcommittee, which will be handling issues that are perhaps more urgent than we had on our agenda for next week, next month.
Policy?
Okay, policy, I'll try to make it short, sweet, to the point as possible. First of all, you have one orange policy that needs to go into your policy book, because that's all done, it's had its third reading. You received a single packet of policies. There are eleven for first reading.
I make a motion to be accept the eleven as presented.
For the first reading.
A motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
Not with that.
Oh.
I think there was a question for Fred on the very first one, professional teacher status. And the third paragraph says that a teacher with a professional status may be continued to be in the employ of the school, potentially, which the employee legally, and is subject to collective bargaining agreement. Does that give a professional status teacher the ability to bid down or continue to have a job over someone who is not in professional status in the school?
That's actually covered by the collective bargaining agreement.
So, would be up to local collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would be a state law. All those in favor? Of the readings?
Yes, I have some discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, I want to call the, I want attention to the, the policy on Facebook and social networking websites, which has some serious regulations or procedures regarding educators that are on social media and guidelines or policies, for example, not, not, except, not being Facebook friends with their students, not giving out telephone numbers, et cetera, without the approval of the district. There's, there's a lot in here for digesting, and it's important that people be aware of those regulations. And I'd say the same thing, one of the advantages of being on the.